Mayor, we're ready whenever you are.
Ready to go. I'll call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Christiansburg Town Council for April 14th, 2020 to order. I would like to ask that we observe a moment of silence for those that are struggling with the effects of COVID-19 and those that are going through some economic struggles because of these shutdowns. So we take a moment, please. Thank you. Do you have the picture of the flag up yet? Could I ask that we all stand in place and pledge allegiance to the flag and I will lead it? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
I would like to make an adjustment.
Ms. Hicks?
I would like to make a motion to have all the non-COVID-19 items removed from the agenda for Code 2.23708.2.
I believe we have a presentation from Chief Hanks and Chief Sisson about that later in the meeting. Is that what you'd like to hear?
Will I have to have an explanation from our lawyer, please? If this meeting, all the items on the agenda will be following the FOIA code.
All right, I believe we have Mr. Broughton on the line. Maybe we don't. Mr. Wingfield, would you like to weigh in on that? We had a, an email, I believe, from Mr. Broughton concerning the legality of the meeting and he feels that we are legal.
Can you all hear me?
Oh, there you go, Reed.
Sorry. I had some problem with my microphone there and in the middle of Ms. Hicks' question.
Excuse me just a second. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Can I second that?
You can't second your own motion.
Oh, sorry.
Are there any seconds to that?
Could I get her to repeat her motion, please?
I would like to make a motion to have all non-COVID-19 items removed from the agenda. Code 2.2-3708.2A3 says the purpose of the meeting is to address the emergency and permits public parties that are unable to assemble in person because of the unique characteristics of the COVID-19 virus. Need electronically to make decisions that must be made immediately and where failure to do so could result in irreversible public harm. So are all those items, if we don't take action today on those, are they going to have public harm if we don't make those motions? I don't think some of them are.
Do we have a second to her motion?
That would be considered an illegal meeting then.
If there's a second, that motion dies. Mr. Broughton?
Yes, yes, Mayor. Would you like me to address that issue?
Well, I think if, although we don't have a second to add it to the agenda, I think it would help not only us, but might help those listening in on the webcam, on the website. But I believe we are purely legal according to the Attorney General and several others. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct, yeah. The Virginia Freedom of Information Act provision that Ms. Hicks cited, you know, is obviously a very important provision. There is an exception in Virginia Code, Section 15.1413, that permits any locality to provide a measure, a method to assure continuity in its government in light of the ongoing emergency, notwithstanding any.
We're losing you, Reed. Reforce your sound.
Isn't the town's attorney's job is to represent the interests of the town government and the Commonwealth's attorney's job to ensure that the laws of the state are followed?
This is Brad. Ms. Hicks, on the 24th of March, you voted in favor of our ordinance in accordance with the Code of Virginia 15.2-1413 confirming the declaration of local emergency and providing for the continuity of government. So you actually voted for that. What we're doing tonight, what we're doing tonight.
Exactly, but I have looked at the FOIA Information Act and I think I stand wrong on that because that's actually not going to, it has nothing to do with public harm unless we're actually doing something that is to help the people. Just because you make a proclamation, that doesn't mean you're going to actually be doing something to help them.
I don't think that anything we're going to do tonight is any different than what we would have done had we had a full council chambers here. We're not going to pass any ordinances which change the way we do business. We're only looking at proclamations and resolutions and appointments to standing committees that expire within the next little while.
Not really. You're taking action on several items as well. You're taking action on the, where did that thing go? You're taking action about the connector route, which we had taken the park out of the budget. You are making a proclamation of the merchant's fee, which we're not going to be doing anything with it. That's not protecting the public of any harm right now. I would really like that answer from the lawyer, please. Is he not still unable to respond to me?
I'm here. Could you all hear me?
I can hear you, Reed.
Okay. I'm not sure how much of my previous response was heard, but Virginia Code 15.2...
We lost you again.
Andrew is going to attempt to call Reed because his, the sound's not on our end, it's on his. So we're going to try to get him on speakerphone.
Reed, we've lost your sound again. I think Andrew is trying to call you. Maybe put you on the speakerphone? Nope.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know. What I said a minute ago was simply that Code Section 15.21413 permits the locality to provide a method to assure continuity in its government, and that is despite any provision of FOIA.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have the approval of the minutes, March 24th, 2020 and April 7th, 2020. Recognition of the proclamation of April 2020 is Child Abuse Prevention Month. Recognition of proclamation of April 6th through 12th, 2020 is National Public Health Week. Recognition of proclamation, April 12th through the 18th is National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. I did, I will remind you all, I did have quorum of, or a majority of the council approved these when I sent them out last week before I issued them to the paper.
Make a motion. We approve as presented.
I'll second.
A motion from Mr. Stipes, second from Mr. Hubbard. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call or roll?
Can you hear me? Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax?
Aye.
Councilman Joe Walter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes? Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is six, eight. Thank you very much. We move into introductions and presentations. At this time, we have Major Ronald Mott from Salvation Army to present on their programs and operations. I believe this is limited to 10 minutes. Major Mott, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Thank you for giving this opportunity to share what the Salvation Army does. You may not know, but we serve the area of Floyd, Giles, Montgomery, Pulaski County, and the city of Radford. Our main office is located at 80 College Street, Suite M in Christiansburg. And our office phone number is 540-394-1037. And our family store is located at 6389 Pepper's Ferry Boulevard in Fairlon. And that phone number there is 540-382-1023. What we are doing to help our neighbors in need, we offer emergency assistance programs in which it provides rent assistance, utility assistance, food, clothing, and furniture assistance to people who have lost their homes due to a fire. We also have a soup kitchen serving lunch every Monday and Friday from 12 until 1:00. We also refer to other agencies, and we have seasonal assistance, including back-to-school Thanksgiving and Christmas. And we also have disaster support and assistance. What you should know about the family store is that the family store is located across from Walmart in Fairlon besides the popular Chinese restaurant. Our hours are 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Tuesday through Saturday. We're closed Sunday and Monday. The money raised in the family store goes to support our assistance programs. It stays within the community. Your donations to the family store help us to help our neighbors in need. And what other services does the Salvation Army provide? Well, the Salvation Army is a church, and the church is located at 1125 Roanoke Street in Christiansburg. We have Sunday School for all ages at 10:00 a.m., worship service for all ages Sundays at 11:00. We have a women's fellowship, which is on Monday at 12:30 p.m., and we have youth activities Tuesdays at 5:30 p.m. We have seen a uptick in food distribution due to the COVID-19. Where we used to see about 10 people a day, we're up to 18 to 25 a day with this COVID-19. During 2019, we were able to provide food boxes to 799 families. We provided hot meals to individuals of 4,940 meals. We provided rent and utility assistance to 45 families. We provide clothing and assistance to 33 families. We visited 1,100 individuals in area nursing homes. We provided 557 gifts to area nursing homes during this past Christmas. We provided 95 individuals with Thanksgiving meals, and we provided 188 families and 474 children with Christmas toys this past year, with clothes, shoes, and food. We also provide spiritual assistance to our community through our church programs. We had 54 worship services, 75 adult and senior adult meetings, and 253 youth meetings this past year. And we were able to serve 2,000 people in these meetings. I want to thank you for your time and just wanted to let you know what we are doing in your community in helping your citizens.
Thank you, Major Mott. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
First of all, I'd like to just say what the Salvation Army does and what you do is just a tremendous service to everyone. And the question I have really is, maybe I just went at the wrong times this Christmas, but I didn't see the bell ringers out like I have in the past. Was there a change?
The change is that people would not work for us. We were paying $9 an hour to ring a bell. We couldn't hire anybody. Nobody was applying. And we also used the civic groups, such as the Rotary Club, the Quanis Club, different clubs to ring. We have 13 locations to ring, but we didn't have enough people to ring for us.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Again, thank you, Major Mott, for the service you provide to our citizens. Next on the agenda, we have Director Karine Khan of the Montgomery-Floyd Regional Library to present their program and operations, and this is also a 10-minute presentation.
Hi, thank you very much for, excuse me, thank you very much for the invitation to join you at your meeting today. Greetings from North Cambria Street, or Northwest Cambria Street. I am looking to get my, let's see, to get my PowerPoint started on the share here. All right. And um, thanks again for having us, having me here. Montgomery Floyd Library serves Montgomery and Floyd Counties. We have a library in Christiansburg, right downtown, and I just wanted to give you a brief overview of what we have been doing in the past year and, as far as our programs, events, facilities, et cetera. This past year, at Christiansburg Library, the patrons checked out over 178,000 items. Our visits were up over the previous year with 129,000 visits. There were 16,000 uses of our computers, and we do have a new system that's going to let us count the wireless, wireless sessions, which will be higher than the numbers of computer sessions, at least judging by the first two months of that. We had 392 programs at Christiansburg Library with an attendance of 6,800-plus people. There were over 302 community, uses of our community room by community groups and organizations with over 4,400 people in attendance. Amongst the big things that happened this year, we, using funding from grants and, well, actually from gifts from our friends of the library and also carryover money from our Montgomery County budget allocations from the previous year, we got new furniture and reorganized our picture books by theme and shelved it face out. You can see a picture of how it looks. We also got our new fun cart in the kids' area for puzzles, games, and stuffed animals and the board books, and also updated the furniture and the arrangement in the school-age kids' area. Formerly, the school-age kids kept getting invaded by the younger kids. Now the school-age kids have more of a space of their own. We started in cooperation with the Library of Virginia, a brand-new edition of 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten. In this case, it's called 1,000 Things Before Kindergarten. The point of it is to build early literacy skills. Parents read to preschoolers from birth, and hopefully by kindergarten, they've read to them 1,000 books. It increases reading readiness, vocabulary, and parent-child bond. And the Library of Virginia and SOHO Press have given us books to give out for each 100 books read. This year, we did subscribe to a new e-audio service called RB Digital Unlimited, which provides over 30,000 e-audio titles that are always available. Don't have to use holds or anything like that. We have managed through donations, through donated funds to maintain equal hold ratios for eBooks as we have for print books, even over the past month, which has been a bit of an extra use of eBooks. And we are part of a program with one of our vendors called Instant Digital Card, which means that even if you don't have a library card, if you download the vendor's eBook e-audio app and put in your phone number, they use geolocation and can make it so that you can check out a few of the eBooks and then it sends you to the library. And of course, the libraries are closed right now due to the COVID emergency, but we do have phone service and we can make people their official Montgomery Floyd Regional Library card account over the phone, Monday through Friday. Christiansburg has had a good, good year as far as working with literacy and English as a Second Language programming with the volunteers in partnership with literacy volunteers, the New River Valley, and other community organizations. We had the Family Reads Program, which is a program that where both parents and preschoolers attend, work on improving their English skills, and children work on improving just their pre-literacy skills. And after that, when we're talking to our community, our attendees, we started two regular weekly series. One is a literacy study group that meets in the evening, and one is an English language conversation group that meets on Sunday. As I said, there were over 600 programs. What was it? Yeah. Just a couple pictures. One of this is Catterday, which is a cooperative program with the Animal Care and Adoption Center. And the second picture there is actually people from our Family Reads Program. We have programs for adults, children, teens, and we missed those programs during our temporary closure here for the COVID emergency. We work, we work hard on community engagement, trying to make sure that we engage with other organizations in the community and places in the community that may be underserved. We had a back-to-school day event and monthly visits to the Linden Green Apartments to help, and those were, you know, youth services staff. We visit Christiansburg Middle Schools Boys and Girls Club on a monthly basis. We do school visits with Christiansburg Primary School and Falling Branch Elementary. We have both the Virginia Department of Health and Carillion come in periodically to do health screenings, whether it's blood pressure, diabetes, or STDs. We also work with Touch a Truck, Wilderness Trails Festival, the farmer's market, and we do supply little free libraries at the Christiansburg Rec. Center, at the pool, and also at the Montgomery County Social Services Building and more. This year, we did review and reviewed the condition of all of our fixtures because we had a little money and we had some ways to, some money from carryover from Montgomery County Budget, so we had some money to fix things. We, during, when the COVID crisis began, we cleaned a lot and we've re-spaced some of our workstations so that people could come in and have social distancing. But we did close to the public on March 16th due to the Virginia Department of Health, New River Health District's recommendations. There were also some dying trees removed and planted some new evergreens at the edge of the lot between us and the rescue squad, and have some major repairs to the HVAC system this year. Just to tie the loop on the COVID-19, we did close as of March 16th. We are offering telephone service, e-resources, and email service. Right now, if you were to look, it would say we're closed at least through this Sunday. It is likely to be longer than that. The Library Board of Trustees is meeting tomorrow night, and we'll have a new close-through date. We've already begun planning for reopening, possibly in stages, but if there is anything we are looking forward to, it is reopening. And we are planning our revised summer reading program. As you know, the summer reading program, or as you may know, the summer reading program will draw 100, 120 kids to its programs. We may not want to do it that way this year. We may want to go to more of a, one that is less crowd-focused, and we have begun the planning for that. Thanks again for all the support we get from the town of Christiansburg. We are proud to serve the town of Christiansburg or other two towns and our counties, and we are trying our best to try and figure out how to, what we can do to meet our mission and goals during the current emergency. And if there's any questions, let me know.
I have one question. You guys in the library do such a wonderful job, and I know you're closed right now, and I saw that you were thinking about maybe trying to do a little revision. Is there a chance, maybe, that it could, you could allow 10 people to go into the library at a time?
At this point, at this point, we are evaluating that for what essentially Phase One of our staged reopening is. But, but we're not in a central business. So in the spirit of the Governor's Executive Order 55, it's a little different than letting 10 people go into the food store or something like that. But yes, there definitely is a chance, and when we reopen, that is probably, it's, it may not be 10 people at a time. It may be more like what Target is doing, where they say one person per every X square feet. But unless we have sort of a clear yes, just open, it kind of is looking that way.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Let me say one more thing. I was at the Depot Park this, and you had that little library extension there, and I was actually looking at books while you're in there. So those things really do pay off.
Yeah, those, you know, it's like, because there's rarely somebody else standing there, they're actually pretty convenient at this point. The downside in Christiansburg is that most of our little libraries are actually inside other town and county facilities, which are closed right now. But the ones that are outside, people are taking a look at.
I'm sorry. I want to thank you for your service to, to the community and for providing, you know, literature to our children. I also wanted to ask you something. So can you explain to me once again what you have said about how to get those books online? So the eBooks, you go online, and is anybody able to just be able to pick and choose from the list of books, or do you have to have a library card to be able to read or get one of those books to be able to?
So the way that it works with libraries is we have a number of vendors who supply us the licensed copies to make available. So the way that it works with libraries is we have a number of vendors who supply us the licensed copies to make available. Some small differences between different vendors. In general, you have to have a library card from Montgomery Floyd Library to access the ebooks that are part of our collection. But one of our vendors, Overdrive, which has the smallest number but the most popular stuff, but probably about fifteen thousand titles of ebooks and e-audio, has a new thing called Instant Card. And you basically sign into their app, Overdrive or Libby, and if you don't have a card, it'll ask for your phone number. And they'll use a geolocation thing that is proprietary to them and verify that you are in either Montgomery or Floyd County. And if they do that, then it gives you access to our ebooks. It does give you access to a limited number. And after that number runs out, and I think it was set at five, then you have to get a real Montgomery card in order to continue using the service.
That sounds like a real service during this time. Is there, can you please tell us again what the website is for your, for the library here in Christiansburg? So our citizens can go to the website? Thank you.
Sure, just go to mfrl.org for montgomeryfloydregionallibrary.org. And that'll take, that'll be the homepage. And right now, on the left, on the mid-left side of the homepage, there's a list of special things that we're doing because of the emergency. But you can also, from the top menu, just go straight to where it says e-library and find the different ebooks and other resources we have. E-books, e-audio, there's comics, there's music, there's lots of things.
That's great. Thank you so much, Sard.
You're welcome.
Very good. This concludes our presentations. As of six o'clock tonight, we did not have any citizens' comments. To the best of my knowledge, we have not had any community, not any community meetings that I'm aware of. If that's, if that's not so, please somebody let me know, but I'm not aware of anything we've had. Under discussion and action by mayor and council, a recommendation, Montgomery County Board of Supervisors, to reappoint John Overton to serve another three-year term on the Montgomery Regional Economic Development Commission. Mr. Overton's current term expires May nine, twenty-twenty, and Montgomery County has requested the recommendation.
Mayor, I have a committee report, actually.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that. Okay, the committee report is for the Virginia Tech-McGumry Regional Airport, Executive Airport. And we are going to be closing the airport from May fourth until around July eleventh to complete the construction work out there. And that will coincide with the Governor's Shelter-at-Home Directive and will allow us to complete the work and be less disruptive to the aviation public and the aviation users. But that was earlier this afternoon. Just wanted to give a report on that. And we're also in the process of hiring a new airport director to replace Michael St. Jean.
Thank you. Now, any recommendation, any motion on appointing John Overton to the Montgomery Regional Economic Development Commission?
I'll make a motion that we reappoint John Overton to serve another three-year term on the Montgomery County Economic Development Commission.
I'll second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Michael, would like, when we can all meet in person again, is that Mr. Overton just attend so he can be recognized by council if some of us don't?
Certainly. Whenever that, whenever that happens, we'll be glad to bring him in. So have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, would you poll council?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilwoman Hicks? Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye. Am I muted?
The jury?
Good day, aye.
Councilwoman Sax?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Very good. That is six. Recommendation of the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors to reappoint Matthew Carroll to serve another three-year term on the Fire and Rescue Commission. Mr. Carroll, current term expires May twenty-seventh. Montgomery County has requested the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Don't move, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion on the second. Any discussion? I would just like to add that Mr. Carroll is a life member, twenty years-plus service to the Christiansburg Rescue Squad. So he is very well-versed on what's, what that commission does and has been a very valuable member of that commission. Any further discussion?
I would just add, just my request, just like Mr. Overton, that Mr. Carroll, when we can meet in person, he come and be recognized by council for those of us who don't know him.
Certainly. No further discussions. Madam Clerk, would you poll council?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sax?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's six. Oh, thank you very much. Resolution in support of the Director of Department of Conservation and Recreation to designate the Christiansburg Signature Park as a public recreational area and to recommend to the Commonwealth Transportation Board that recreational access funds be allocated for the adequate, for an adequate access to serve the park area.
I make a motion, we approve the resolution in support of this application. If we choose not to build the park or whatnot, the funds will not be allocated. And being familiar with the program, if we don't ask and have it lined up, it will not be an option for us. So I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution.
This has nothing to do with COVID-19 right now. We took the connector rule out of the budget during the April session. How is this related to the?
Do I have a second to the motion? You do. Okay. Now, Ms. Hicks, discussion?
Yes. We took the connector rule out of the budget for this, for this time around. This is not related to COVID-19. Are we with the Dodras' offices for the, for the Dodras' families' access to their home?
We took it out for the July first budget, but we have not taken it out. It doesn't mean it's always going to be out. We need to preserve this as an option.
Well, we can come back to this item later on in the, after we figure out we can put an amendment or something to the, to the budget. But right now, it's not in the budget. Therefore, it should not be part of the agenda.
Any other discussion?
I think it's a good idea to go ahead and try to get state funding when we can do it. So I support keeping it in at this time. It's imperative we plan, even if we don't use the park later.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you poll council, please?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilwoman Hicks?
No.
Councilwoman Huppert? Councilwoman Sax? Councilwoman Showalter? Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's five to one. Thank you very much. Consideration of a request from the Montgomery County Economic Development for the town of Christiansburg to assume site review fees for Falling Branch Corporate Park Phase Two. And I believe, do we have Brian Hamilton with us to explain his position?
We do have him available. If you have any questions, of course, this is for basically the Falling Branch Corporate Park Phase Two. This is basically to, the town would assume the fees, review fees for those, besides any state fees. It's approximately eleven thousand dollars worth of review fees. I think that's specified in your council packet. And as the mayor specified, Brian is available for questions.
As we discussed this afternoon, I would have thought that their engineers would have put those, those fees in rather than to come to us at the last minute and ask that we waive those fees.
My question would be, how's this benefiting the town?
Randy, you got that?
For me to speak to those?
Randy, you're muted right now.
Yes, yes, Brian, if you'd like to go ahead and speak.
Okay. I emailed Randy and Andrew a copy of the Falling Branch Corporate Park Phase One and Two layout. So Falling Branch Phase One, the county and the town partnered to develop the park. And we moved the boundary of the town of Christiansburg over to all of Falling Branch Phase One. Falling Branch Phase One is full, except for one twenty-acre site, one nine-acre site, and one three-acre site. Generally, prospects are looking for more than twenty-five acres. So the county moved forward and purchased Phase Two, which is the former Cox Farm, a hundred and twenty-five acres. And we received, so in planning, the Virginia Economic Development Partnership rates greenfield sites such as this from one to a five. We were currently at three, which means we would not be ready for a prospect for at least eighteen months. So the county applied for a grant from Virginia Economic Development Partnership, and they paid approximately fifty-five thousand dollars of a hundred and ten thousand dollar fee to do design, all of the grading, all of the grading work, all of the road work, all of the water and sewer work. So this allows us to move the park from a level three to level four, meaning it'll be ready in twelve months for a prospect. How it benefit Christiansburg is Christiansburg would supply the water and sewer and entire Phase Two would have to come into the town of Christiansburg.
I'm sorry, Brian, tax revenues?
Tax revenue, water, sewer.
Okay.
How much will the stormwater fees feed for this location?
That would depend on the amount of impervious surface.
Right now, we're not asked to waive any of that, is that correct?
Yes, sir. When those pads will be developed, they'll be developed by private companies, and they would pay the stormwater fees. But we're, I guess, in working on upgrading this project, it was through a grant. And what we're asking is just simply that the town waived their portion of the fees, will pay the state portion of the fees without any problem. It just tax on an additional eleven thousand dollars or ten percent to a hundred and ten thousand dollar project.
Any further questions? Any discussions?
Yeah. Mr. Hamilton, once the parcels develop, then they become a part of the town of Christiansburg, and then they also become part of our real estate tax base. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That's another benefit to the town right there.
So we're going to become landlords, is that correct?
No, ma'am. No. Montgomery County Economic Development Office, which I am director of, we manage Falling Branch Corporate Park Phase One and Phase Two. So all this is, is bringing the property ultimately into the town of Christiansburg.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, so at this time, Phase Two is not in town?
Half of it is in town, and half of it is not in town. Okay. If you remember, a few years ago, we, the Economic Development Authority, was going to apply for a Go-Virginia grant. And Town Council authorized the three hundred thousand dollars to match Montgomery County. So we could apply for a Go-Virginia grant. At that time, Go-Virginia Region Two told us not to apply, that they were not interested in building industrial parks. That has now changed as a result of the lack of product in Virginia. The COVID-19 will, of course, stretch out development of that land. But once we are in a position, we would like to bring all that land into the town and then also apply for the Go-Virginia funding.
So we, you're asking for us to waive the fees for a government agency when we don't even waive the fees for any of our businesses coming into town, correct?
I can say that at times, the Economic Development Authority has paid the fees. And Randy, I believe fees have been waived on other projects.
I think that is correct. Probably with that country, I would say we assume the fees for that development. Possibly with, with polymer solutions or aero probe. I know we provided water and sewer connections to those developments.
I'll tell you the way I, I look at this. The people who move into there are going to have to live somewhere, they're going to have to eat somewhere. They're going to add to the clientele here of this area. And so the more we have, the greater rate that people are going to want to come here. And it's going to, and I think in the long run, add to the quality of life here.
Mr. Huppert, just like everybody else, I have built homes here. We have businesses here. We have opening businesses here as well. We have paid for all connection fees. And at any point in time in history, the town has not waived any of those fees for us or for a lot of the business owners here in the town. So, and I do appreciate other companies moving into the area. That's obviously a right thing to have. And it's great that we are pushing into that direction to have more companies here. I'm also asking for us to be sensitive to everybody else as well because all the other companies and all these other people are also bringing people into the area.
Now, Brian, I might be wrong, but these locations are highly competitive. And different locations are doing different things to try to encourage these people to come here just for employment and all the other things I just went over. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Eighty percent of what Montgomery County Economic Development does is existing industry inside the two towns. That's our biggest point of expansion. Falling Branch Corporate Park Phase Two is designed to compete with other parks from North Carolina, South Carolina, Tennessee, West Virginia, so that we can attract a, the goal is a large employer advanced manufacturing or light manufacturing to the path.
I was gonna, this is Brad. I was going to mention, the economic development orbital that the county deals with and we do, we do with the Falling Branch Corporate Park is a whole different ballgame. And we are competing against other localities, other states, other regions. And they're on a different orbital, and they bring oftentimes a tremendous amount of real estate investment, machinery and tools, employees, tax base enhancement. And so attracting those, attracting those investments to our area requires, you know, these types of incentives. you know, these types of incentives. And so, uh, you know, I think that, I think that, uh, the community, uh, benefits from us, you know, enhancing those incentives for them to locate, uh, the, uh, companies that Brian and his group are working on. So, uh, I'm in favor of this.
Is that the form of a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve.
I'm sorry, Mayor, but I do agree with having things like this. This is really good to have those incentives for new businesses to come in here to our area as well as it is for businesses that are opening anywhere in Christiansburg. And that's why I'm also asking that as we're considering to do this for this, um, this people that we're also thinking about in the future, about other people that are opening up their businesses here, that we should be able to do the same for them as well.
Well, you, you interrupted my motion, but I'll continue by saying that I, uh, endorse, I make a motion to, uh, waive the site review fees for Falling Branch Corporate Park Phase Two. And if we want to consider something separate on a different agenda, that's fine, but I'll make a motion on this behalf.
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Stipes, second, Mr. Showalter, any further conversations or discussions?
Can we, ma'am, can we wait for this? Um, does this have to be done today because this is really not related to COVID nineteen?
I feel like we've already discussed it, we're just down to a vote right now.
Exactly, but we shouldn't have a vote right now, we should wait because this is obviously, uh, we don't have even public comments during this meeting.
I have a, I have a motion and a second. And unless the second and the motion want to withdraw, then we're gonna continue. I'm gonna ask the clerk to poll council. Do either one of the motionee or the second wish to withdraw their motion?
No, they're staying.
Madam Clerk, would you poll council?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilman Bishop?
No.
Councilwoman Hicks?
No, because of the foyer.
Councilman Harper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is four to two, motion carries.
Mayor, can you hold on one moment?
Yeah.
You know, I, I understand, uh, Jo- Joanna, that you, you, you voted no because of the foyer, I understand that. But, Mr. Bishop, can you, I know this is already passed to council, but could you expand on your no vote, uh, after we've gotten it through?
I'm not gonna do it at this time, I'll vote it.
Thank you.
Can you explain?
Moving on, consideration of a resolution for landlords to voluntarily take measures to assist them.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Barber, but you asked, Mr. Showalter had the chance to ask Mr. Bishop. And I also want to tell you to follow with that, there's a really industrial park vacancies with private businesses in Christiansburg. The threshold center that has the ability, um, why is the county building these properties? Isn't it competing with private developers right now? Because as far as I know, there's a lot of buildings on Falling Branch that they are empty right now.
No, ma'am, um, the only building that's empty in Falling Branch is the Dish Building, it's a hundred thousand square feet. That building, um, basically satellite TV, as you are all aware, um, has declined. And they closed that call center, which had been open since two thousand. It has been purchased by Roanoke, uh, based attorney and it's, uh, four lakes. All the other buildings, Backcountry.com, Aeroprobe, Polymer Solutions, um, Inorganic Ventures, they're all operating uh, with employment. And for about eighteen years, um, Dish had a minimum of six hundred employees.
What about industrial park, don't they have vacancies there as well?
No, yes, ma'am, we do, uh, we have a twenty acre vacancy. The issue is the minimum, um, the minimum that a company will generally take is twenty-five acres. So we've been locked out of the ability to promote our park. The first pad, um, on Phase Two will have thirty-six graded acres, which will allow for up to one million square feet.
Do you have any people that really would sign leases that are gonna be able to come to this building?
Ma'am, I don't own the building, we market it for, um, the town of Christiansburg and the owner to try to attract, uh, folks to it. The Dish Building sits in between an industrial building and a Class A office space. We've shown it quite a bit, um, to industry and we have not had any luck in placing people in it.
Okay, thank you, sir, for replying.
Thank you.
You know, another thing to consider too, you know, even-
We have, we, we have voted on this motion.
Okay.
It is passed.
Thank you very much.
So I'm gonna, thank you, Brian, and we'll move on, consideration of resolution for landlords to voluntarily take measures to assist tenants.
I'll make a motion, we approve the resolution as presented.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? This is a voluntary resolution, it's not demanding anything of anyone, except they consider voluntarily working with their tenants.
Now, will conventional loans be able to apply for these benefits?
I understand it's a recommendation and not a requirement, right?
Yeah, but when you make a motion about this or you, I mean, a recommendation about this, you should know the answers to this. I mean, because as far as I know, so far, right now, what the answers that we're getting is only FHA loans are able to do something like that or government backed up loans, not conventional.
I, I, I'm, I'm not sure I follow your line of questioning with all due respect. Uh, this is the, the, the local, uh, landlords voluntarily work with their, with their tenants to assist them. It's pure and simple, that's all it is, there's nothing about loans or bank loans or anything else. Do I have a motion and a second? Any other further discussion? There are none, Madam Clerk, will you poll council?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Um.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilman Harper?
Come on, Steve.
I did.
Councilman Harper?
He's muted.
Did he say aye?
Steve, what's your vote?
Aye, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is six oh, thank you. Uh, consideration of a resolution regarding merchant services fees. This is a resolution, I believe, Mr. Wingfield, that we are going to send to our state delegates.
And I, I just point out, I don't actually have a draft of the resolution, I have it on there for council discussion to, to see if you would like me to draft something in that regard.
But it is to go to the, the legislative body of the, of the state to ask for some relief in the way in, in the merchant services fees that, that our merchants pay to collect sales tax.
Correct.
So my question today is, is the town going to, um, pay back those businesses to, for collecting those fees locally? Because I know this is a state mandate.
But it, it does affect every business, which is why I've been working on it for two years. I felt like if we could have a cohesiveness of the council and send our collective decision together, it might have a little bit more power. But one percent of the sales tax collection trickles back down to our locality, um, so it affects everybody. And I do feel like this is important for our businesses right now to continue after this path, to get that discount for merchant services back to them by the state. And all we're doing today is just agreeing that we would like to proceed to do that on behalf of all of our businesses.
But this has nothing to do with COVID nineteen again.
Well, if it puts more money back in the pockets of the businesses right now, that's, to me, is every penny counts.
Well, I don't see that in the, um, merchants fee, um, resolution thing that you're making right now, so.
I guess I'm confused.
Do I have a motion?
I would like to so move to, uh, do the resolution and, uh, have all of us agree to support our local small businesses.
I'll support Randy to develop a resolution and I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Sacks for leading this effort. She's been an advocate for small business since she, uh, came on to council. And this is one, uh, gesture we can, uh, take to, uh, help small businesses. So thanks, uh, Ms. Sacks, and yeah, I support, uh, Randy's development of an, of a, uh, resolution regarding merchant services.
Second on that motion?
You did.
Okay, thank you, Brian, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Any further discussion?
Resolution, I don't see the resolution right now.
It's a, it's a resolution for Randy to develop a resolution.
We have several, we have, I think we have several, uh, draft issues, uh, or, or existing resolutions like this that we can draw from. So we're, we're going to ask, with this passing or not passing of this motion, we're authorizing Mr. Wingfield to, uh, draft a resolution, we will see it, uh, when he is done with it.
I'll include it on the next regular agenda and, and in the packet.
Okay.
I guess actually we're resolving to develop a resolution is what we're doing.
Almost. Yes.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, will you poll council, please?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
If it's a resolution, I, I will want to, to see.
Do you vote aye yesterday to the, to it?
Uh huh, yes, aye.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilman Harper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
I appreciate the support, thank you.
Under staff reports, town managers report.
I actually have one other item on the agenda, uh, item G.
Oh, yes, that's, I missed that. Consideration of a lease agreement with Fiber Technologies, four fifteen Cambria Street Northwest. Randy, would you explain that?
Yes, that, that's the former Row Furniture Building, Mayflower Moving Company Building at four fifteen Cambria Street. I have previously brought you, I guess, potential tenants for that building. But the rate of that lease would be for the, uh, ten thousand square foot warehouse area, that, that building is sectioned off. Uh, the whole building's about forty-eight thousand square feet. But the, uh, betrothed tenant, uh, would like to use ten thousand square feet and the office area. The rate of rent would be three dollars per square foot for the warehouse area. And I've agreed that they could use the office area for free if they would pay the power bill, which typically runs about five thousand a year. So five to six thousand a year, so you're looking at roughly five hundred for the, for the power a month. But that is basically the same terms I've offered other companies and we have had advertised through the Montgomery County Economic Development Site for several years now.
Uh, Randy, do, does that require any investment by the town to make it suitable for lease?
No, it does not.
Then I will support it, I will support that, thank you.
I, I, I remember, uh, a year or so ago, we were having some trouble with the roofs leaking and all that, we don't have to worry about that?
We, we still do spring occasional leaks in the roof, although they simply want to use it basically to store spools of, of fiber cable that they are using to install, basically they're the installer for Comcast. So, you know, i- even if their cable does get a little bit wet, it's really kind of no harm to them. Uh, but they will use a little bit of that office area, the, the roof over the office area is pretty secure. Uh, we had that section reworked. Like I say, in the rear of the building, we will occasionally spring a leak. And we, we will fix it as needed, but like I say, I see no issue if they do happen to spring a leak. It might get some cables wet, but that'd be the worst case and there's really no harm, is what they said.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the lease agreement with Fiber Technologies for four fifteen Cambria Street Northwest.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion?
Those are required to purchase their own, um, insurance, correct? Or not for the building itself, but the stuff that they will be having inside, correct?
The, the agreement calls for them to maintain their own insurance.
Okay, thank you.
The town, the town has insurance also.
Ms. Hicks, that's a great question, thank you for asking that.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll council?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Harper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is six oh, thank you. Uh, moving on, staff reports to town manager.
Uh, I mentioned the community tilling program that I've considered with parts and rec and using our, our two existing lots. We have one at, uh, I guess, uh, Slate Creek Commons and also one at our former Waltwood Tanks outlet, uh, Warren Street Tanks. Uh, also, I'd like to utilize the park, uh, well, the location of the emergency services building out on Roanoke Street. Uh, I mentioned basically opening that up to community, uh, nonprofits. Uh, had it suggested maybe making it private sector, although my concern with that would be the volume if we opened it up to private property owners. Uh, just with an agreement with council, I'd proceed, opening it up though just to nonprofits at this time, if, if there's concurrence.
Comments? Any thoughts or comments?
I have a question, Randy, can you just go into a little bit more detail why we would open it up to only nonprofits instead of individuals?
I, I would be concerned about the volume if you made it literally all the property in town. You know, you've got roughly ten thousand households in town.
Uh huh.
Um, if, you know, you've got lots of private property in town. Uh, uh, my main concern would be just the, the sheer volume if you opened it up to, to basically everybody in town.
So do you know what the nonprofits would do with what they grew then, would it come back to the community somehow?
That, that would really be up to them to determine, uh, whether they give it to their congregation, uh, you know, maybe we could have some type of provision that any excess be donated to share the spare. Um, but really I view that as up to them as to how they distribute them. Like, like I say, if it's a church, if they were to distribute it amongst their church group, I wouldn't see necessarily any harm in that. Uh, although, you know, if it's a more open nonprofit, like say the Pharmacy Garden is basically open to anybody there at the Health Department building.
So I, I guess the only question I would have, if, if we are going to go the nonprofit only route, would there be an application in which they'd have to state the reason that they wanted to do this and what they plan to do with the produce?
Y- yes. I, I can bring an application to you next council meeting if you like.
Very good, all right, thank you.
I guess a few other things, uh- I guess a few other things. I've had, I guess, requests about community support presentations like we heard tonight. Do you want me to continue to have those if they're related to the budget or budget requests? I know it's not necessarily the most convenient way to meet.
If they're related to COVID-19, I think we definitely have to continue to encourage those. I would really like for us to extend the invitation to commu, to other organizations like the McKee or the New River Community Action to come over here if they need to, and they feel like they need to speak out to ask for more funding from the town citizens of Christiansburg. And so people have more information about them and how they can be able to donate to them.
I, I would suggest if we continue to do this, that we limit it to two per meeting. It seems to be a nice use of time and it would be 10-minute presentations. But any thoughts on, on two per meeting?
I agree with that, and I thought they were very informative today and they were, their timing was good. And I think it's good for us to hear things like that. I don't know how long we're going to be doing it like this, but I think it's a good way just to, to keep up of what's going on.
Now, you're asking about requests for additional funds or just presentations? Because I don't think the Salvation Army requested funds, they were just telling us about.
The Salvation Army, it was perfect example. I actually, if he's still here, I would love for him to give a website information or if he has any way to tell the people or the public how the people can get involved into helping them more. If they want donations by mail, by the phone, any way like that. I, I think, I mean, I would love to encourage those organizations to come out and speak how they want that funding. Because the citizens, we are all, I mean, I'm more than sure there are a lot of people out there that would like to help these organizations. And what a great way to get them to donate to these organizations by listening to us and encouraging people to help each other during this circumstance.
I believe they have a very active mailing solicitation from, to, to the residents of Christiansburg, if I'm not mistaken. If I am mistaken, then I stand corrected. But I seem to receive every year requests for funding and, and personal donations to the Salvation Army. Is that, are you close to correct, Ms. Sacks?
I could speak up on that a little bit too. They did recently move, like you mentioned, and they have a Facebook page and they have a website page. And they're always needing help, whether it's in their family store, bell ringing during times, helping serve food. And I will get with Major Mont and ask him if he could email all of us how we and the citizens can help. And I'll share that within this week.
Thank you.
Would there, would there be a problem with adding these organizations to our webpage, one of our announcements, and their links to where the public can donate or donate to their organization specifically?
That's a great idea, Henry.
We, we can certainly add those.
That would be great, I would really like that.
So is, is two a week right now, okay?
I think that's good.
I'm sorry, is it, does it seem reasonable?
That's a yes for me.
Okay.
Yes.
A yes for me too.
Very good. Anything else, Randy?
I'll just point out that we have a work session coming up this next Tuesday at 6 o'clock in regards to the budget. Just remind council, I assume we feel we still need that meeting. I have heard from a few council members that they'd like to reconsider some of the community support applications. Basically, of course, that's up to council's discretion, whether you do.
Are you done with that?
Also, I just.
Give more money to the McKee and the New River Community Action?
I, I think council, have those discussions, whether you want to have further discussions or not in regards to community support.
Okay. What I want to tell the public to today is I want them to stay safe, healthy, and look after their loved ones and neighbors.
Thank you. Mr. Wingfield, continue, please.
I'll just point out, I've got all three chiefs on the phone, police chief, fire chief, and rescue chief. And just ask all three of them to give us a little bit of update in regards to COVID-19 and basically how, how they're handling things right now. And I guess I'll, I'll start with Chief Hanks if he's on the line.
Randy, we will defer to Mark and let him start off if that's okay.
That's fine.
Are you there, Mark?
Chief, you're unmuted, so it's not on our end, it's on your device.
It either be your, your volume or your microphone.
Randy, Randy, I can go ahead and start and if we, Mark chimes in right there, we can go ahead. You know, we're continually meeting with the New River Valley Health Task Force, that's a daily meeting. So far to date, I think Mark has the numbers in front of him, I don't have the numbers exactly, but I know we've tested over 800 people through the test site. The test sites have mostly been at Blacksburg High School. We did test at the New River Valley Mall last Monday and that test site was very successful. It set up easy and it was easy to manage. We moved the test site today to Pulaski High School, or not Pulaski High School, but the Pulaski County Fairgrounds in Dublin, Virginia. We were able to pick this, pick up the site from Blacksburg and move it to the fairgrounds in Dublin. Very successful there. They tested over 110 people at that test site today. And we will be bringing that test site back to Blacksburg High School on Friday. Of course, you know, the, the more people we test, the more we expect the positive numbers to go up. It's just expected for, for testing. If you're not testing, then the numbers don't go up. We're testing, we expect the numbers to go up. Still today, we only have 33 cases in Montgomery County, which out of 800 and some people that's been tested, I think 33 is a pretty good figure per se of positive cases, which, you know, we could expect to be much higher than that, and it's not. So that is a good thing. We continue to have great support through this health task force with, with the town of Blacksburg and Montgomery County. Our logistics crew are, is absolutely second to none. They pick this site up, they move it, they set it up. We have great cooperation with the National Guard assisting us with this. And we, you know, we, we're looking toward the recovery phase. How do we recover as a locality? How do we get back to some type of normalcy? That's stuff that we are looking at right now. But we are still way, way ahead of the curve as far as testing goes. There's not another test site. I think the closest test site anywhere around us right now is Martinsville. So for drive-through testing. And, you know, to have tested 800 people already says a whole lot, you know, for the group that we have here leading the charge on this COVID virus stuff.
Chief?
Yes.
Of the 33 that have, have any of them been hospitalized or are they all at, at home?
Councilman Huppert, I think most of them's at home. I think, I think the, the report we got this morning that there's only three hospitalized right now. So that's, that is great news out of, out of the ones we have that are positive. So, but I believe the number was three this morning that they gave us.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief. Did we ever get Chief Sisson on the line?
We did not, although we've got him on speakerphone and we're just going to increase the volume on him. Mark? Are you there?
Let's move on to Chief Coyle if he's on the line.
I am indeed here, sir. So at, at Rescue, our focus has been on making sure our personnel were adequately, adequately trained in how to use personal protective equipment, making sure we had the personal protective equipment, which has become a challenge. Thank you to Chief Hanks and his role as emergency services coordinator for helping us with that. We're, we're pretty well poised at the moment. Call volume is actually down a little bit. This is a phenomenon we're seeing across the country. People are actually afraid to go to the ER, so they're not using 911. That will change as, as things progress through the, the summer. And we expect call volume to spike and then drop down to our, our average. We're down about 11% from year to date last year. Our big challenge is right now, we're finding some specific pieces of personal protective equipment and making sure we have those. But we've got some pretty structured policies in place to protect our people on suspect calls.
Very good, very good. Do you ever get Mark on the line?
No, we did not.
Okay. I have, I talked to Mark earlier today and he tells me that, you know, they have the, the protective equipment in place and that all of their officers are wearing the masks when they're outside of their vehicles. They even have a protective eyewear that they're using. He has done some shift realignments and I think he says that now he's got a normal shift of 10. He's got five working and five on call and then they rotate back. I think he, he felt like that we weren't, there wasn't a need for all 10 of them because their call volumes are quite low at this point, or lower than normal at this point. And it keeps from having more people into the police station when they're not really needed or they're not really out on the road. That's a summation, he said he has got, all of his people are, are healthy. He's got none of the, none of the officers that have, have shown any signs that if they do, they have a method in place to have them immediately tested. I don't think any, I don't think there's been any, any missed work at this point other than maybe one officer. And the test on his family came back negative, so he came back for it the next day.
Mayor, can I make one more comment? Go ahead, Councilman Bishop.
Yeah, I also want to say last week, I had the opportunity to go over and visit the site, not actually down at the site, but where I could see what was going on. And once again, I was taken away or escorted and by Chief Hanks. And it was so good just to see so many entities come together and how smooth the operations ran. And once again, to get and, you can't just walk in, you have to be escorted. But I think I enjoyed my visit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, just, just wanted to add one more thing. You know, Councilman Bishop referred to the cooperation between localities. This is not only a Montgomery County effort, this is a Pulaski County effort, a Giles County effort, a Floyd County effort. And we're all partners in this together and, and we could not have ramped up this health task force and this drive-through testing without the cooperation of everyone involved. Jerry Henline, the building official, actually loaned us two of his building inspectors and we're, we're using them daily to help us with onsite logistics as far as check-in of the personnel that are on site so that we have accountability of the people on site. Every day, they, you know, when they come in, they check in. We know who's on site, we know how long they've been there, we know when they leave. But this, this is a total community effort with our partners around the region, around us. And that, that's why this health task force has been so successful. I don't think that I have seen the cooperation in other localities like we have here. But this is, in, in Chief Sisson's words, this is what we're built for and this is what we do. And I think Mark might be back on now, maybe? Chief?
I don't think so.
You're there, buddy.
Okay, good to go.
Good to go.
I apologize for that. And I think you guys, Billy and Joe, touched on most everything that I was going to talk about. But simply just to update on some of the numbers. I think Billy had mentioned we have done seven test sites. We have tested over 1,000 people. Just got late information today, out of those 1,000 people, we have 42 positive cases. That equates to 4.2% of tested patients are positive. Now, that's important because the state average is 17%, which means our early proactiveness and shutting things down, preaching, social distancing and all of those things, we feel very confident that that's working. The other thing I'll touch on briefly, I think Billy spoke about it. The task force in the last couple of days have, we've spoken diligently about the next step. And the next step for our community is to try to get back to some normalcy. And basically that means getting our community back to work. And that's going to be very important to our future economy, so we know that from a task force perspective. So one of the things that we've done this week is we have developed three subgroups. And those subgroups are medical, industrial, and small business task forces. And they'll, they'll, they'll be working on some initiatives as we launch into, to our next phase, which is recovery. And we obviously know that's not tomorrow or not even next week, but it's coming and we need to be ready for that. So the task force is doing phenomenal work. If you could watch how this thing has morphed and how much work gets done daily and what true professionals are involved, our communities should be very proud of how this has come together. Chief Hanks and Chief Coyle have done a phenomenal job and just happy to be a part of the team. And as Billy stated, it's what we're built for. We're going to make it happen and we're going to protect this community and we're going to get back to normal very soon. So thank you and sorry for the audio problems.
Mark, I, I tried to speak a little bit about the, about your force and how they're holding up with this. So I don't know whether you heard that part of it or not, but a brief rundown is, as far as you know, we're all, they're all healthy and, and are being, are protected with, with the PPE and glasses and everything else?
Correct, we've taken some proactive steps to shift our personnel to make sure we don't have, you know, a ton of people on top of each other and split them up. And it's working very well for us, so we'll continue to do that. And we'll definitely have the people on, on the ship and on the ground to protect our community. But we're being a little more resourceful in that respect to make things happen. So yes, I appreciate that, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for your input, any questions?
I think it was a great report. I would, I think Randy, you put on your weekly report to council some information about testing kits. Would you mind mentioning that here?
Yes, we have two types of tests that we're conducting at the center. One is roughly 85% accuracy blood test. That is a quick turnaround test, takes about 10 minutes from a, a blood brick. If you are testing positive, then they're sending you for the COVID-19 test. But that's helping to keep emergency responders on the road. It's just kind of, like I say, gives you kind of a quick turnaround response. Whereas the COVID-19 test has to be sent off to a lab for basically confirmation. And that can take anywhere from two days to even, even a week potentially. So we are glad that we locally ordered the blood test. Basically, Montgomery County, Christiansburg, Blacksburg, and Virginia Tech all contributed to purchasing those. We do hope to be reimbursed on those through the, the emergency declaration. But of course, like I say, we did purchase those locally. And it was, I think, with good, good insight, I guess, foresight to be able to do that. Because like I say, it has helped us, I think, more readily be able to keep emergency responders out on the road.
Appreciate that. Didn't you have something about a local business who actually flew out of one of the airports?
We did have a donation from a local business owner actually to fly their private jet to Atlanta to pick up some of the test kits. They flew out of Blacksburg Airport and like, basically donated use of their private jet twice anonymously in order for us to go back and pick up the test kits. Last week when we picked up the test kit, or week before last when we originally picked up the test kits, they only had 2,000 and 10,000 kits that we ordered. And basically they allowed us to use it a second time to go back and pick up the remainder of the kits.
That was very nice.
Thank you, Randy. Mr. Wingfield?
Just, I'll mention, as Chief Hanks mentioned, we'd be glad to take you for a trip to the test center sites if any of you are interested. It works like a pretty well machine there if you get a look at it. If you want to reach out to either me or Chief Hanks, just let us know. And just mentioned, first, thank the chiefs, all three of them, for all the work they're doing, and as Billy pointed out, the task force really already has turned to looking at recovery and what that looks like, what does it look like when the students come back, and how do we facilitate that? Because if they come back, we're still going to have to have precautions in place. I don't think we necessarily go back to simply having the students come back and then not practice social distancing. Of course, obviously, it's going to take time to figure these type things out, but that's, task force is already looking at recovery, so.
Very good. Anything else? Randy, anything else on yours?
That's all I've got.
That's all you got. Town attorney, Mr. Broughton?
No report, Mr. Mayor. I do apologize to you and the council for the technical difficulties earlier.
Thank you. Any other staff? Hearing none. We'll go to council reports. I will start by seniority. Mr. Showalter?
Nothing to report, but I take it I'm the most senior member on council now?
By the beard, you are. You look 65. Mr. Stipes?
Well, I'd like to say that we're grateful as a council and as a community for the leadership, the town leadership and our leadership of our emergency responders for the way that they've handled the preparation for this epidemic that we're dealing with, and also with their day-to-day activities to protect us and flatten the curve, so to speak. And I think our average citizen, including ourselves, or myself, I'll say, we're very grateful for the preparation and the daily activities that are being undertaken to get us through this, and it's incredible, actually. So, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Hubbard?
Mark, you're, Randy, I'd like to go to the test site. If you guys just want to give me a call whenever you're going to come and whenever you're going to go, and maybe I can go with you. That'd be great.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes. Once again, I want to thank Chief Hanks for giving me an escort up to this test site, and I want to make it clear that I did not go down to the site itself, which is on top of the hearing, save, but for privacy reasons, you cannot go down to the test site itself.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes, I do have some shout-outs I'd like to do. There's a group in the community called MRV Mask Makers, and they have a Facebook group. They've been making masks diligently, like, I think the group is 500 and some people who are sewing masks for our local communities, and if people can't sew, then they're washing the fabric, they're prepping it. It's a wonderful collaboration. So, I just want to give a shout-out to that group for all of their hard work and everything that they're doing to help our first-line responders. It's most appreciated that that's been pulled together, as is many other groups in our community. The second thing I wanted to mention was I've been reached, I've had two community support people reach out to me wanting to change their requested donation amount in lieu of what's been happening with the COVID-19 virus, and I just want to throw it out for the council to see if there's any consideration of allowing the applicants a one-time modification to what they're asking, something that might be more in line with the needs, because when they asked, we were in a pretty good economy, and now we're not. So, I'd just like to throw out that consideration for a one-time change.
I'll discuss that in the budget amendment, in the budget meeting on Wednesday, Tuesday. Is that good? Okay. Ms. Hicks?
I do want to say that, thank you so much to our community. Thank you for, to all the community that is coming together to help others. Thank you for staying home, the ones that are staying home, and thank you for the ones that are going out and having to do this essential jobs to keep us going every day. The store employees, the people on the emergency sites, the people at the hospitals, the people that are testing, the people that are playing any part in the community right now to benefit the rest of us. I thank you for everything that you're doing right now to keep us safe and healthy and keep the economy going right now during this horrible circumstance.
Thank you, ma'am. And I will correct myself. I believe Mr. Stipes is a senior member of council, so when we go under this guideline again, I'll refer to Mr. Stipes as his position on council defers.
I didn't want to take any of Brad's glory there for being the most senior member, but Mike, I'm glad Joanna said that. I mean, there's a lot of appreciation out there for our first responders, but it's also the grocery store clerk, the nurses, the doctors, the truckers who are making sure we get what we need. It's a whole community effort out there, that those people are now on our front line ensuring that we have food, we have medical coverage, everything still works, services are still there, we're still protected. It's just, it's a huge thank you from me, and I'm sure all of council, but Joanna, thank you for mentioning that.
And I will echo everything that council said in praise of the community and the work that's being done, not only by the first responders, but the average, the citizen that's still working in the grocery stores and these type things. So, it is a tremendous effort, and I applaud all of you for what you do. Is there any other business to come before council? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Stay safe and healthy, everyone.
You, too.